Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order and welcome everyone to tonight's March 4th, 2025 City Council Meeting. We would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support. Help each of us engage in meaningful discussions allowing us to grow closer as a city and further the bonds of our community. Be with our staff as they continue to strive to provide the highest level of services possible to our citizens throughout the city. May we act with love and respect for the common good of all whom we serve in our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Our next item on the agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smear.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of duty to avoid conflicts of interest by acting in any potential conflict to be done this night. Thank you.
Our next item is the approval of minutes from the February 3rd, 2025 work session. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those are approved. Our next item is a request for additions to the consent agenda. The request is for Item H, Agreement North Church Street, Vaughan Road, and Graham Hookdale Corridor Area-Wide Plan. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on this addition to the consent agenda.
May I make a motion to add this item to the consent agenda?
We have a motion to add Item H. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item H is added. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. The consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following item, please let us know. Item A, to approve the reclassification of a part-time housing technician position to a full-time housing and planning technician grade 208 effective upon City Council approval. Item B, to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned surplus equipment consisting of two 12TB drives in the amount of $100 to the City of Graham pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-274A and authorize the IT Director to execute the requisite documents to convey ownership to the City of Graham for use in its IT department. Item C, to approve and accept an easement offer from the North Carolina Department of Transportation relating to widening of Graham Hookdale Road from Hanover to Morningside, Project U-604, 6014014Z, for impacts to city-owned parcel ID 139644, and to authorize the mayor to sign the deeds for the easement agreements on said parcel. Item D is to approve the following temporary street closing request during the same from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM. That's at Front Street from Spring Street to Worth Street and Main Street from Davis to Front Street. Item E, to approve budget amendment 2025-39 for Police Department to accept sub-recipient grant funds from the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga to cover the subscription costs of Good Sam Software. Item F, to approve budget amendment 2025-40 to allocate funds for the Building Services Public Works to complete the purchase and installation of a new building generator for the Police Department Headquarters. Item G, to approve budget amendment 2025-41 for the Transportation Department to allocate additional FTA Federal Transit Administration funding flexed from the Carbon Reduction Program for two electric paratransit buses as well as adjusting to account for unanticipated expenses related to various transit line items. Item H, to enter an agreement and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract between the City of Burlington and Freeson Nichols for an area-wide plan for the North Church Street, Vaughan Road, and Graham Hookdale Corridor contingent upon final approval of the City Attorney. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. During public hearings, there will be open for public comments on each individual public hearing. Our first public hearing, number one, a public hearing has been scheduled for the City Council to consider a request to rezone property from Light Industrial LI and General Business GB to Conditional Industrial CI. The property is addressed as 2250 Hatchery Road and is roughly 18.78 acres in size. It is located on the south side of Hatchery Road, east of the intersection with Alamance Road, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 120963. At this time, council recognizes Executive Director of Planning and Development Services Jamie Lawson. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mr. Council. Let me just get my PowerPoint up and running. Okay, so the first item tonight for rezonings, as you stated, is a request for a conditional industrial rezoning. This item was presented to you at your work session in February earlier last month. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend this item at their January 27th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The item was properly noticed for tonight for a public hearing, and essentially, this also went through the Technical Review Committee for site plan review as well, contingent upon the conditional industrial rezoning process. The Technical Review Committee reviewed the plan that you see in front of you on the screen and approved it back in January. On the right-hand side, there are a number of conditions that were included on the plan and agreed upon by the applicant who's sitting in the audience, in case you have questions for him. As with any other conditional industrial rezoning process, even though this went through the TRC initially, any future development of the site would have to go back through the TRC for review and approval, and they would be subject to all of the Unified Development Ordinance standards and procedures. Staff is recommending this rezoning request as it is consistent with the future land use designation for the area. You'll see on the map, on one of the screens up here, that the property is located primarily in the general industrial future land use designation, which is consistent with what the applicant is seeking. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Essentially, what this rezoning allows for is the existing concrete plant to remain without any expansions or alterations, and also allows for a future recycling facility or recycling center which was not currently allowed in the current, under the current zoning.
Any questions for staff on this item? Can you go back one slide? Maybe it was the other one that showed the part. Is there another one? There was a note that I had a question on that I saw over to the right. So this says that the proposed rezoning supports the existing concrete plant while bringing it into compliance with the UDO.
Correct.
What exactly is, are we doing to bring it into compliance?
Okay, so currently, the concrete plant is an existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
The property, it essentially came into existence, you know, before zoning, let's say. And so as a result of that, it's considered to be non-conforming. So under its current provisions, it would not be allowed to expand or be altered in any way. Through this rezoning process, it brings the existing use into compliance as well as adds an additional use that would be allowed on the property should they want to proceed that way.
Any questions? So this is a public hearing. So at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments related to this request. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on Item 1 on the agenda? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on Item 1 on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. At this time, I'll defer to council. Is there any questions for the applicant or for staff? If not, we will entertain a motion on the rezoning request as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve this request as it's consistent with the LUP. I make a motion to recommend approval of a request to rezone property from General Business GB and Light Industrial LI to Conditional Industrial CI. The property is located on the south side of Hatchery Road, east of the intersection with Alamance Road. The parcel consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 120963. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be regional industrial. The request is compatible with the land use plan. Proposed rezoning supports the existence, the existing concrete plant while bringing it into compliance with Unified Development Ordinance. It also allows the ability for a recycling center to occur subject to the conditions stated on the conceptual map. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for industrial uses in this area. The request is compatible with the existing use of the property and other non-residential zoning and land uses in the area. There will be no hazardous liquids. Oils or batteries will be accepted. There will be no improvements within the riparian buffer area. There will be no improvements to the existing concrete plant. There will be no improvements with the sanitary sewer easement or fiber optic right-of-way. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's Unified Development Ordinance. Any significant deviations from the concept plan or any additional conditions that may be necessary should determine by the Technical Review Committee shall require a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission and approval from the City Council.
Thank you. So we have a request for approval. Is our motion for approval. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 1 is approved. Thank you. Moving to Item 2, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider a request to rezone property from General Business GB and High Density Residential HDR to High Density Residential Limited Use, or HDRLU. The property is addressed as Zero Stout Street and is roughly .275 acres in size. It is located on the west side of Stout Street, south of the intersection with Schoffner Avenue, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 177375. At this time, council once again recognize Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. So this is a request to rezone the property that's highlighted in teal. It is currently split-zoned. It faces Stout Street. You'll see a portion of the property is in High Density Residential, which is the orange shade, and the rear portion of the property is in General Business. That presents an issue when trying to develop the site for residential purposes. So the applicant has requested a limited-use rezoning request to High Density Residential solely for the purpose of single-family detached. That's it. So this item went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was recommended unanimously. It was presented to you at your work session in February and has been not noticed appropriately for tonight. Staff is recommending this rezoning request consistent with option number one found on your consistency statement sheet. So again, it is, it just for one, because of the size of the property and the width, that's all that would be allowed under the UDO.
Any additional questions for Jamie? So this is a public hearing. So at this time, we'll open the four public comments on Item Number 2. Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on Item Number 2? Anyone on this side that would like to speak on Item Number 2? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed, and if council has no questions for staff, I will entertain a motion on the request as noted on your green sheet.
I make a motion to recommend approval of the request to rezone property from General Business GB and High Density Residential HDR to High Density Residential Limited Use, HDRLU. The property is addressed as Zero Stout Street and is roughly 2.275 acres in size. It is located on the west side of Stout Street, south of the intersection with Schoffner Avenue. The parcel consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 177375. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be traditional residential. The proposed rezoning of the property to High Density Residential Limited Use, HDRLU, for single-family detached dwellings only. In-field residential development is more desirable on this property compared to the allowable uses with the General Business GB zoning district. The proposed rezoning moves the site into compliance with the future land use plan. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with the general land use pattern of the abutting residential neighborhoods and the zoning district to the east. The proposal is consistent with the future land use designation. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's Unified Development Ordinance.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve as it is consistent with the land use plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Item Number 2 is approved. Moving on to Item 3, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider a voluntary non-contiguous annexation of two parcels of land, parcel ID 140910 and 140921, located at the terminus of Christopher Drive and Cross Country Lane. The total area of the request is 17.181 acres in size. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson once again. Jamie?
Good evening. So this item was also presented to you at a previous work session and noticed accordingly for tonight. This involves the annexation request for two parcels. The, as mentioned at the work session, this area was subject to an approved TRC preliminary plat for 42 single-family detached residential development. The properties are currently not contiguous to existing city limits, so this would be under your purview to consider, but it would be currently be considered as a satellite annexation. Just to add a couple of notes, on the left on your screen, that is the property in question. You can see the lighter shade is the ETJ, and the darker shade is existing city limits. To the right is a snapshot of the approved TRC preliminary plat. Just to make note that Christopher Drive, which is where the access would be coming from, is currently not NC DOT maintained, but as a condition of the TRC approval, that segment of the road would need to be publicly maintained and meet NC DOT standards. And this is something that will need to be addressed between the applicant and an NC DOT as part of that approval. I think that covers my slides. Staff has recommended the annexation in order to provide the utilities and connections to further that development.
Jamie, where's the utilities, the closest utilities now in terms of connections?
Don't have that map handy. I'm sorry. Bob, can we just re-do it?
There's public water in the stuff out there at Christopher Drive, and then we have, there's sewer in that street also, but it's not accessible for this development. The terrain isn't such that you could gravity flow. We do have an outfall along the creek to the southwest that would allow gravity flow.
Any other questions for Jamie? So this, this request is for annexation only. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. The project as presented will be subject to TRC approval and adherence to the UDO.
That's correct.
What's before us is annexation alone.
I got a question there. Jamie, in terms of providing services, once we annex property, I mean, what, do we have some kind of timeline? Have we got to provide a full complement of services, water, fire?
I am not sure in terms of a specific timeline. I would imagine, you know, for this particular site, it would be based upon, you know, the development schedule of the property. Obviously, right now, it's a, you know, it's a vacant track, so there isn't anything to serve, but as development progresses, just like any other project, then it's, infrastructure comes into place, the utilities. It's all part of the next step in their development review process.
I don't know. Just like I said, I thought maybe there may be some kind of statutory requirement that certain services have to be available. Davis, do you know right off hand what?
They do. And of course, whatever the effective date of the annexation, if you chose to approve it, that's when the place property comes onto the tax forms.
So as it stands, if it's approved, would it be effective at midnight tonight? I mean, that's what would typically be, yeah, assumed with items such as that. And you mentioned that there was, was there, is there a contingency here? Did you say something about?
Well, just, just like any other project that goes through the TRC approval process or review process, NC DOT is part of the reviewers. And in this particular situation, Christopher Drive is not a city-maintained street. So there are provisions that do tie upgrades and maintenance along Christopher Drive to the development site. So that's really a negotiation between NC DOT and the developer.
And would the, would TRC allow permitting on this project until that was approved? Because otherwise, it could fall back on us at some point if it was not up to state standards, could it not?
Well, the only issue, as you mentioned earlier, the only issue that we all denied is the annexation. So you can't have-
But it would have no bearing on us for this, for this approval?
That's correct.
Okay. That's just what I wanted to be sure. Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Excuse me, may I ask, please?
Ma'am, if you'll have a seat just a second, we'll open a public hearing here in just a second. We're trying, trying to get our bearing straight on, we know what the request is. We just want to be sure that we've got everything properly documented. Any other questions for council?
Sure.
Okay. So this is a public hearing for annexation request only. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments. Ma'am, if you'd like to lead us off, I'd like to respectfully ask that you please give your name and address for our city clerk.
Yes.
And we have, each person speaking during public comments will have three minutes. Beverly will have, Haley will have the timer going, so.
I've got three minutes.
Yep, three minutes.
That's fine. We organized an association in the 80s, and we're the ones that got the city water and sewer in the Lower Hookdale area.
Right.
I did not know anything about this until Thursday night. I do have a petition for some of these people's side. What they are opposing on this more than anything is the traffic that will be coming in and out of Christopher Drive over Dixon, Swinburne Road.
Okay.
Would you like to say this?
No, but we do need your name and address.
I'm Linda T. Martin. I live at Dixon, Swinburne Road, Burlington, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you. But there are other alternatives to go into this property. We've rode around and looked. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Welcome this evening. Please state your name and address for our city clerk.
My name is Sylvia Guardado. I live in 524 Christopher Drive. My question is, why is only one exit? It's gonna be, I lived in Christopher Drive for 23 years, and now we're gonna have 100-plus vehicles go by.
Well, I think what council is addressing tonight is whether or not we're gonna bring them into the limits of the city of Burlington. We're not debating, nor are we contemplating, the project in and of itself. That would be for staff and our Unified Development Ordinance and our Technical Review Committee.
Okay.
Yep.
Do I have another minute?
Yeah, you've got three minutes, absolutely.
Back in 2007, Benny Wilson tried to build houses, and the city council denied it because the road wasn't correct to build houses for the traffic. So I think that's the issue I heard she mention about the deal, the NC DOT. The road is not in condition for like 100 vehicles pass by. So that means they have to redo the, the road again?
They would certainly have to meet, I would assume that they would have to meet NC DOT standards for any street that would be turned back over to NC DOT. So, but again, that's through Technical Review Committee and NC DOT to decide. All we're here this evening is to just talk about the annexation into the city limits.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Good evening. My name is Roberto Guardado. So I'm here in behalf of my father as well. He is the owner of, let me see if I can get this right. Where it says PAD 140921, there is another PAD right there beside it. I'm trying to find the number for it.
So is this an owner of the adjacent property?
Yes. So if I can find the number, I could be specific, but our basic concern, okay, yeah, PAD 141004. Our concern is if a sewer line were to be built in the future, if approved, would that sewer line be able to connect to that PAD? Because we wanted to, well, my father wanted to build a house there, but we weren't approved for septic, and a sewer line unfortunately was, wasn't an option for us at the time. So that would align conveniently with our plans to build a house there. That's our question.
Okay. I think at this point, with that question regarding a personal need and not the request before us, maybe Bob, if you guys could connect and you could walk through them? And Beverly, can you see that they get Bob's contact information?
Okay.
And we'll have staff address that directly.
Okay. I'm assuming I'll meet with him at some point.
Yep, Bob will handle that.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll get that, we'll get that answered appropriately. Anyone else on this side?
Hello. My name is Tanya Sims, and I'm 1949 Dixon, Swinburne Road. And from what we're all neighborhoods understanding, is this, we don't want the development to, but this ain't the place to, I mean, how do we, in our quite older neighborhood, I mean, I'm 53 and I'm about the youngest one there, so, yeah.
So I think, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, by right, the development is allowed?
It's properly zoned.
It's properly zoned, so.
This is not a zoning hearing, this is just for the petitioners, petition to be annexed into the city, that's going to be issued.
So this has not been approved without?
We, we don't have to approve it. The land use plan that was already.
I knew it is, I'm sorry.
No, I totally understand, sometimes it confuses me. But the land use plan that we're operating under has already allowed that by right, going back several years.
Okay.
So it is allowed to be developed within the guide, within the boundaries of our Unified Development Ordinance, which staff guarantees that they adhere to through a Technical Review Committee process, including NC DOT, which will be certain that everything is handled to standards and traffic is dealt with appropriately.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? Anyone on this side like to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Tom Wisniewicz, one of the property owners, and, you know, obviously, a lot of people in the street haven't been part of this approval process, which has been going on over a year. We have met extensively with Charles Edwards, NC DOT District Engineer, with Tarsha Felton, Assistant District Engineer, with Todd Lambert, City Engineer. We've talked about the road from the very start. This property was originally approved for subdivision in 2004, Barnesdale Forest. The road was built to state standards at that point. Mr. Edwards remembered it, Todd Lambert remembered being there. Unfortunately, the two property owners got in dispute, construction stopped, and the road has been sitting there for 20 years in the current condition it's in. Mr. Edwards asked me to make some repairs to the road, the existing road, within the current right-of-way, patching a couple of rough spots in the road. After the homes are built, Chuck Edwards asked us to do a lift on all of Christopher Road, which is not a random thing. We've done environmental testing, geotechnical engineering, we had TriMat out there, we've boarded the road as required, working closely with our engineering team, the geotechnical engineering team, and DOT. So we have a real clear path forward to satisfy DOT. And we've worked extremely hard, spent a lot of money on engineering to date, but that is what DOT has asked us to do, and that is what we're planning on doing. I think it's a reasonable request, because what Mr. Edwards did not want to see is us do a nice new blacktop and then have construction vehicles tear it up, turn it over to the city in rough shape, or we have to do more repairs to it before it's turned over. The road is very drivable right now. It has about eight-inch of ABC stone, two to four inches of asphalt, so it's built to state standards, as far as we tell from our testing that we've done so far. If it were not built to state standards, I think it would have fallen apart a long time ago, because the road has not been driven on, and if you know anything about roads, roads do not do well when they're not driven on. They like that constant compression. So I think it's a very well-built road. We plan on meeting or exceeding DOT requirements. In terms of utilities, we have an eight-inch water line on Christopher Drive. The fire department came out and pressure tested that. We've got fire flow tests for that. Sewer is on-site. We've got four manholes, gravity flow by Service Creek, so that's already on-site. So the town's obligation to bring sewers, water and sewer utilities has already been met. That's one of the things we liked about the property. It's taken me a long time to kind of wrap my head around the complexity of that road. It's very confusing, because there's another section of Christopher Drive, as you can see, that does not connect, that's not built to state road standards. There's been, several people have talked about Cross Country Lane. If anybody's ever been down Cross Country Lane, it's about eight feet wide and falling apart in gravel. There's no way that that could ever be brought up to a standard for secondary ingress egress. The fire department, the fire chief, the police chief, everyone felt like for, for 42 homes, there's more than adequate access in and out of this neighborhood. The last thing we want to do, and the last thing the town would allow us to do, is build something that's gonna be patently unsafe. So we take that fire safety very seriously. There'll be fire hydrants throughout the neighborhood, there's one there already, so we're putting multiple fire hydrants there. I think it'll be a very safe neighborhood in terms of fire safety.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Again, this is, this item before us is just for annexation purposes alone. Yep, is there someone else that would like to speak during public comments?
It's Christopher, I have a phone. I actually live on Cross Country Lane. My property will butt up to two parts of this, right in the corner, and there's a little notch on what you're asking to be annexed that's actually right behind my house. Looks like they want to stick a single-family home right in there. There is city water and sewer on Cross Country Lane. I know, because I pay for it, and of course, because I'm not part of the city of Burlington, I pay double. It's pretty expensive. But I have, there's three manholes, I believe, on that road. So if this thing happens, and that gets annexed, everybody that lives behind me is gonna have city water and sewer, but they're gonna be paying half of what I am, and half of what I think several of us in the area are paying right now. One of my concerns is that, you know, I've lived there for 20-some years, and, you know, it's a, it's a nice little property, and I pay my taxes, but I pay an exorbitant amount of money to have city water and sewer, and I feel that if they're gonna, if it's gonna be in my backyard and all around me, and 100 yards down the street, and every place else, that I, I should maybe be getting that luxury also. So that's all I want to say about that.
Any other, any other public comments?
I have three minutes more.
No, ma'am? But thank you for asking. Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Same.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed. So at, at this time, I do want to recap. This project will fall under our Unified Development Ordinance and our Technical Review Committee, and it'll be vetted with NC DOT and everything else, and is allowable by right. So what is before us this evening is strictly annexation into the city limits of Burlington. So does council have any other comments for the applicant or for staff? Not, we'll entertain a motion for the annexation request as presented with no consistency statement necessary.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve annexation request as presented with the second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for your comments, and we appreciate everyone coming out this evening. Our next item? Still might be some confusion about what will happen next. And Jamie, would anyone who live in that area that's, has questions, would you be the person would be spoken to about that? Also, it's concerning utilities too.
We can direct them to the correct.
Direct person? If there's any issues, any questions you got? Because this is a little bit complicated in terms of what utilities are in place, what's gonna be annexed and what's not, and how it impacts everybody else in terms of the roadways also. Okay, who, who again?
I have been corresponding with Linda, Linda Martin, quite a bit, so I don't know if she's gonna continue to be sort of the neighborhood gathering point, but, but she's been in touch with me, and we've had a lot of nice lengthy conversations about, about attachment. Yes, yes. So she has my contact information, and I can also share it after the meeting.
And she can share it, and as a simple gesture, all you have to do is contact City Hall, ask for Beverly Smith, our city clerk, and she will get you exactly where you need to go. Whether it's, if it's a water and sewer question, talking about city services, she can get you with Bob Patterson in his office, and if it's about the project and the approved TRC plat and what's gonna be happening, Jamie can guide you through that. But Beverly would be a great point of contact. Is that fair, Beverly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the council? If not, we'll move to new business. This evening, under new business, City Council will consider temporarily closing the following streets and parking lots during the Alamance Region AACA Annual Car Show on Saturday, May 17th, from 2025, 2025, from 6:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. The Alamance Region AACA Annual Car Show submitted their special event permit application through the city of Burlington for this event. The closures will be from Front Street, from South Worth Street to South Spring Street, South Main Street, from East Davis Street to East Front Street, City Lot Number One, the back half of the block closest to Webb Avenue, City Lot Number Two, and the Paramount Parking Lot. At this time, we'll recognize our supervisor of special events, Sean at the very end. Sean here?
Oh, there he is.
This is the guy that always promises good weather?
No, I make no promises. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for hearing us out tonight. I'm here on behalf of the AACA Car Show, hosted by the Alamance Region. As you stated, they are requesting a closure of the streets listed. Again, that's Front Street from Worth to Spring, South Main Street from Davis to Front, as well as a partial city, or a partial closure of City Lot Number One, the back half closest to Webb Avenue, City Lot Number Two, which is right across the street from Danny's Cafe and near the bus station, or the Link Transit stop, and then the Paramount Parking Lot as well. That closure is for, or they're requesting for 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The event time is 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., so that allows time for setup and breakdown and getting all those cars out of there. This is a longstanding event. I believe it's been going on for more than 50 years. I believe the past 20 or so have been at the depot, and it's, these guys are great to work with. There's several of them in the crowd tonight. If you have any specific questions about the event, we're joined by Mr. Donnie Nance and Ms. Mickey Klutz. But yeah, if you have any questions about the event, I'd be happy to answer them or defer to.
If it's been going on for 50 years, I'm sure, I'm sure Mickey's attended all of them.
It draws a good crowd, and on a good weather day, they have around 100 vehicles that are usually entered in it, so it's, it's a pretty big deal. One thing, as I spoke with the event host, we kind of shot for the stars on the request. I was communicating back and forth with the applicant, and obviously, there's, downtown's gonna be going through some, some construction phase here soon, and we don't know exactly where we'll be with that process at this time. So with that layout, it allows wiggle room, so if certain lots are not accessible, or if certain streets are not accessible, they still have enough room to adjust and adapt.
Well, I think that's probably good planning, given the circumstances.
Yes.
This is always a good event, and it's a, it's a very robust event for downtown Burlington. So I know we, we've looked at this on numerous occasions, but it's always been very well-done, and we're very appreciative of the level of interest you guys have in downtown and doing this event there. Any questions from the council, or Sean, or anyone?
They're proud owners of their vehicles.
They should be. They should be.
That's, that's for sure.
They should be. I'm ready for a motion if you guys want.
Mayor, I move that we approve the request.
We have a motion for approvals. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is approved. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
He guarantees good weather. He always does. At this time, we'll move into public comments. We'll call on public comments, and those are restricted for any topics that are not on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes during public comments. So at this time, we'll call on John Michael Garner of 2915 Kenny Street concerning signage.
This is some signs that I've got from Hall River. This, you know, it's a beautiful little town there, but the sign for like city, there's a, on the, like I say, I like their off in Kenny Street, on Church Street. There's one little sign that says COB. That's all it is, COB. Not welcome to Burlington or anything like this. This is just what some of the cluttered out of Hall River, what they look like.
Wonderful. Have you ever seen Hall River?
Yes, I have. And I also remember the sign used to be close to your house, and it's not quite like this , was it, right? No.
It's not like this.
You say that.
The sign, it was about the train station. It was a, a small sign for that. So I was wondering, I don't know if anything is elaborate as that, but it would be nice to have something that other than just a COB sign. And that's all I see.
Okay. All right. I'll, you want to leave these?
Yes.
Okay. We'll be glad to keep these.
Great.
We're going to give these to you.
We, we've got some money in our TDA. We're actually looking at that now. We're branding, we're doing a lot of recreation signs now that you'll, you'll see, but we're also looking at our entrances to, to the city as well. So you're, you're right on target with what we want to do.
There used to be the, the train track.
No.
Did we remove that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it seems dead.
Yeah, well, for years and years, but...
I, I remember that.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
That's what it was, right there, it was a sign, a sign right there on the town.
On the right side, you come into town.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Our next public comment request is from Frank Papa of 25, 2353, I think, Grand Oaks Boulevard. Yes.
Yes, 2353. Good evening. I'm here to request a vote by the city council to allow the ownership of chickens, backyard chickens within city limits, specifically egg-laying chickens. Owning chickens is like most things in life. They, they're pros and cons. I'm moved to believe that it's our duty as citizens to make the, make this, make the, those determinations for ourselves. On those pros and cons, I believe it's the role of the local government to recognize those abilities and recognize our ability to create things for ourselves than putting in place rules and programs to assist us in our creativity while respecting the needs of all of our residents. I just want to share my experience and propose a solution that will hopefully satisfy most of the Burlington residents. Now, in 2008, I saw a video, or 2018, I saw a video of a family who was able to mix homesteading with city life. They had very modern accommodations while they had self-sustained practices like harvesting water, growing their own food. I was completely amazed as a person who'd lived in the city, I never considered doing any of those things, really. I began researching and planning. Within weeks, I purchased all the equipment, the coop and stuff, for about $250, and then eight chickens with vaccines for $36. As of today, if I just bought those eight chickens, it's over $200, place that over. That's not including the coop, the water, the food, any of them. And that's with vaccines, but still, it's over five times the price. They were about 24 hours old when they showed up at our local post office here, and that's when my journey as a chicken dad began. I got home, gathered the kids, I was very excited, opened the box, and to be surprised, like, two of the chicks didn't make the, didn't make the journey. So that was the first moment I realized, like, wow, they're going to be an educational purpose for me as well, including, including the children. They taught us a lot of lessons. Chickens are conscious, like other pets. They have person, they each have their own personalities. Any pet owner that you know will tell you, upon your pet hearing your voice, they'll react, you know? Chickens are the same way. They each have their own song. Some days, I would quietly spend time listening to their peaceful chattering songs. I have a video that I'd love to show of the chick, of one of our chicks singing back to me, mimicking my, mimicking my singing to her. Lastly, and admittedly, the reason why I originally got them was eggs. Can't, can't even begin to estimate how much money I've saved on eggs over the years. Each chicken would lay like about an egg a day, some would even lay two. They fed my children for years at very low monetary cost. Anything I paid with time and effort was paid right back to me through the lessons they taught, the laughter we had with them, and the peaceful environment they created. So here are some proposed solutions that we could possibly do to maybe motivate you to take that upon a vote. A $5 one-time registration fee per address where the chickens reside. That entry fee could dissuade unserious owners and could give the city a mechanism to enforce its ordinance while also generating some tax revenue. A cap on the number of chickens, being two per person residing at that registered address but not exceeding 12. This will deter crowded coops. Crowded coops are the leading cause for potential mistreatment, pest infestation, and possible infections. A ban on roosters within the city limits. This will ensure that an overpopulation event does not take place while working in conjunction with the number cap. It'll also eliminate the concern of excess noise in city limits. Roosters, they are about the size of, when they make their noise, it's about a dog's bark. Egg-laying chickens, they can be loud, but not that loud, and also, they lay eggs without the need of having a rooster in the coop, or even a rooster present here. A vaccine mandate on chickens for anybody gets scared. Vaccines for poultry prevent common disease. Chickens provide food, and that food has to be safe for human consumption. And a requirement for a fenced-in area or a designated coop on the, on the property that's registered. That will simply ensure two things: nothing comes into the chickens' area and the chickens don't leave their area. Pretty much just here to ask if you'd be able to take that up for a vote. I'm willing to assist anybody else who wants to own chickens, with the goal of bringing responsible chicken ownership to the city of Burlington. I will, you know, I do have that video. I'm willing to stand by and show that video to anybody or talk to anybody who wants to do that. Also, I just want to quickly mention that all Alamance County does allow chickens, and they allow a few unlimited amount with roosters. The other cities as well, so.
Thank you. Haley, that's a lot. Next is Tanya Rutherford, 2112 Choice Court.
Yes. Hi, good day. I'm checking. I second him. Roosters can be loud. Chickens, when they make their noise, are, are any louder than people talking, so actually quieter than dogs. I would like to have a public hearing on chickens. Last time I came and talked to you, it was like $2 a dozen. They're pushing 12 now, which is ridiculous. And a lot of people are worried about chickens flu, but people with a covered coop don't typically, private backyard chickens don't really get that. They can get it from wild birds, but again, a covered coop prevents that. I think we should allow chickens in Burlington because every city around us, Hog River, Grand, within two blocks of me, forward and to the side, allow chickens and roosters. Gibsonville, Elon, we provide animal services for Elon, they allow chickens. Metanhaslam, Charlotte, Raleigh, Karen, pretty much every city. We are one of the last holdouts, and I don't understand why. I think other cities, even bigger, smaller, have shown that it can be done and done successfully. I think having, obviously, rules in place about having a fenced-in yard, an appropriate-sized coop or run, paying a fee or permit. I think that's all keep people from just randomly doing it, letting you know who has them, and that they're being taken care of appropriately while bringing revenue to the city. I think it could be a win-win. And I would like to know what we have to do to get a hearing on it. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Next this evening is Bishop Greg Hargrave. There he is. Apple Ridge Development Update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I have promised, I promise you that I would come back and do you all updates. Things are continuing to go. We were just about to put the curb and go near me and for the road at St. John, it goes to Apple Street, and it turned about 15 degrees. We've been wrestling with that part of it, and then it started raining, you know, it's gotten quite wet. But I'm just pleased to announce that, you know, the next thing that we'll do will be, you know, put the binder down, et cetera. Of course, we'll, we'll do the curb and go, and then eight inches of ABC stone, then put the first binder down. All the infrastructure is in it. All the fire hydrants, all those things are in. The water has been tested, so we're getting very close. It's been a process of, of the end. We're committed to finishing everything. Let me thank you all because the last injection was very timely for us, and that's just to reiterate that this partnership is, is a great one. And remember, I'm hoping that the next time I come back that we will be building that first 12 houses. There's 10 after that, and then 10 apartments. Well, thank you again, and I hope to come back with some increasing good news.
Now, Bishop, you, you should have an end on this weather thing.
Yeah, I really, I really should. Yeah. But I...
We're going to turn it back to you now, now that.
I just don't, I'm going to do a little bit of this tonight, my prayers and all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That concludes our public comments this evening. So our public comment period is closed. We'll move to council comments. I do have a couple of date reminders. One is this Friday, Friday, March 7th, at 3:30 p.m., there's a ribbon cutting that will be hosted for the grand opening of the Seelow Fossett Community Garden at North Park. So the community is invited to celebrate the grand opening of the garden, and there's going to be some activities, hands-on activities for everyone to enjoy. So that's at 3:30 on Saturday. And unfortunately, I will be out of town and will not be able to be there, but that Seelow is very near and dear to all of our hearts, and that's a wonderful asset to, to North Park as well.
Friday.
Is it Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, Friday. And next is Friday, March 14th, is Burlington Recreation and Parks is hosting St. Patty's Day Bash in downtown Burlington. We've got dancing, live music, juggling. Sean's promised good weather and lots of other activities. And then one other announcement, the Burlington Grand Metropolitan Planning Organization, our BGMPo, which council member ward chick, ward chairs, and I serve on it as well. It's in the middle of their drafting of the 2025 Transportation Plan. So the, we are seeking community input to help shape transportation for the metropolitan area. This will help shape it through 2050. So this is a pretty big undertaking. Works underway to identify and prioritize projects, roadways, intersections, bikeways, sidewalks, transit service, anything to do with transportation planning is included. So the easiest way to learn a little bit more is www.bgmpo.org. And I think the survey results and the draft plan will be shared at a public workshop in, on the 26th, that Alamance Community College, at the Dillingham Conference Center, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So if anyone wants to go online and participate in that, we would love to have your input. Any other council comments this evening? Hearing no council comments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Sub move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
What a gorgeous, you protect me well, as I say. Get us through, you.